This Board Work Session of March 29th, 2022 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're here tonight to talk about building efficiencies and consolidations.
Absolutely. We're going to cover a lot of ground. Hopefully you can hear me with my microphone working.
Good. So the PowerPoint is on all four screens and due to the magic of technology, regardless of what screen you look at, you'll be able to follow along with my pointer. So hopefully we'll cover a lot of information. We'll probably do it in chunks. We'll start a little bit with a very brief historical background and then Tim Oswald will bring us up to date on our SAVE funding, our ability to do construction projects. Then I'll go into elementary, middle school, and then other projects. So tonight is a very important time in the district. It's a time where we're kind of circling back to really where we were two years ago. Two years ago, maybe two years and two months ago, we began having conversations about the efficiency of our district, particularly as it regards to enrollment centers, how many buildings we operated, the size of those buildings. And we just had a real brief conversation and then on March 13th, the world shut down for two years plus with COVID. So with the pandemic, we received ESER funding, a significant amount of ESER funding. And one of the goals with ESER funding was to create consistency for families, for students, so forth. So really for two years, our goal was to continue to educate our students in multiple different ways, our teachers, our staff switched gears often from being closed down, doing all remote to hybrid. So anyway, then today, we swing back around to having need to have a very important conversation about the district and the financial well-being of the district, which today is good, but the projections in the future are not so good. And so we'll get into some of the whys of that. So we know our ESER funds will be depleted in June of next year by law. There is an end date on those funds. We know our projected enrollment, as you'll see, our enrollment trend for the last seven years is the wrong direction and we project that based on the number of preschoolers and five-year-olds in the community to continue for at least the next couple of years. And then we also want to make sure we're talking about staff. Very competitive market right now. Teacher education programs are down 35% nationally, so we have to think about how we'll continue to staff our buildings and what steps we need to take to be able to be competitive in that market. And not only our certified staff, our hourly folks as well, you don't have to drive too far to find jobs that pay better than our paraprofessional jobs, our bus driver jobs. And so if we aspire to make that more attractive, then we have to take some steps on our end to be efficient with the resources that we do have. Okay? So financial considerations, I'll talk for a minute and then I'll turn it over to Tim. But it's a little more complex than this, but I'll break it down into really two areas. One is our general fund. And in our general fund, that's where we pay the majority of our pay and benefits. Eighty-two percent of our general fund is in staffing. There are some staff members that are paid out of Title I, out of special ed, out of at-risk, so a little bit of a generalization here. But the general fund is really a component of supplemental state aid. The state tells us how much we can spend per year, per student, and it increases that number annually through the legislative process. So supplemental state aid is, has, and at least my opinion, fallen short for the past decade. It's been below, in many cases, the inflationary trend within the state or around the nation. And certainly this year is a priming example of that, where we have a 7% inflation rate and 2.5% allowable growth. So as our spending per student goes up by two and a half percent and many of our expenses go up 7%, you see a deficit there. Our enrollment is down, 513 students since 2015. Each of those students brings in $7,000. I wrote it down, Kevin, and I left it in my office.
Seven thousand, $227 this year, about $7,400 next year.
So you see, so if you just say $7,400 is rough math, times the 513 students, that is a significant reduction in our spending authority, the amount we're allowed to spend because we have fewer students. So it's a little bit of a perfect storm. High inflation, low supplemental state aid, and declining enrollment. Those things put most districts, including ours, 75% of the districts in the state of Iowa have declining enrollment, so we're not alone in this canoe. We're, a lot of us paddling in the same direction. But we know we have some issues that we have to talk about. Our unspent balance is like our savings account, if you will. In a year that we don't spend all of our dollars, we're allowed to save those dollars for a one-time expense in the future. So our unspent balance today is healthy because of ESER funding. When that goes away next year, it will deplete very quickly. It is illegal for us to have an unspent balance at zero. At that point, the state takes, steps in and takes over a school district. That's not happening in the near future, but without action, it could happen. It did happen in Davenport and some other places in a probably about a four- or five-year time span, depending upon other decisions that are made. We're not going to get there. We're not going to let that happen, but it's why we're having this conversation today. So general fund, and the reason I'm doing this explanation or history is for the folks who might be watching at home or those who are in the audience to say, you see the general fund where we've got some stressors, and now we're going to talk about the SAVE. Okay? So the SAVE fund is the fund by which we build buildings, do construction projects. Because the first question I always get, and we've been here before, we were here, oh, six or seven years ago, and we cut $3 million worth of staffing primarily out of the central office. So we're really at a point where that's not much of an option. But the first question I get is, well, you're putting additional onto senior. You're proposing potentially building a new building. We have money in the SAVE that could only be spent on construction projects or technology. And that is garnered through one cent sales tax. So as you purchase things, or people around the state purchase things, we accumulate those funds and we can spend them on construction and technology. We cannot spend them on things like pay and benefits. And so they're two very separate entities. And so what we're trying to do is how do we use the SAVE fund, which we do have or will have, as you'll see in a few minutes from Tim, in the future, in a way to make the district more efficient to support the general fund so we can do those things that I was talking about. And then Kevin and Amy and others, feel free to jump in here where I go astray.
Yeah.
But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tim Oswald, and I was going to say it from Piper Jaffray, but it's Piper Sandler now, who updates the board occasionally about our SAVE fund and how that impacts our ability to bond and build or do reconstruction projects or purchase technology.
Okay. So Kevin and...
Rick handed out my presentation to you. So I'm going to walk in detail through the first one and then the rest are similar with some deviations we'll get to. So on the left side of the table, you'll see at the top it says version one. Right below that, you'll see a yellow line with column numbers. I'll refer to column numbers from time to time as I bounce around the table. Or on the far right, you'll see at the top, the beginning balance, you'll see the number 32.9 million. That's the saved cash that is currently on hand at the district. Now, you might say, gosh, that's a lot of money. I'll remind you that you've committed approximately 28 or 29 million of that to senior. It just has not yet been spent. So the balance is not nearly that high when you factor senior out of the equation. So what I am trying to do is illustrate what kind of bond capacity you have against the tax. And there's four scenarios, there's four different sets of assumptions. Chances are, none of them are accurate. Let's make sure we're clear. These are just Tim-made-up scenarios for discussion purposes today. In classic Tim mode, I would ask you to look at column 13 first, since column one would be logical. Under column 13, you'll see the enrollment estimate. And we did, for this exercise, we chose to assume your enrollment will be down 100 kids this fall, so that would be FY '24's budget, and then stagnant thereafter. Well, you can make any different set of enrollment assumptions you'd like to consider, but that's just one that we chose. Column 14, revenues per student, current environment, we're getting $1,112 a kid. So I just can, for this scenario, I carried that forward. It seems unlikely to me that that number will not grow. Seems like it will grow, but for purposes of this discussion, I did not grow it in this example. I did in some others. Back over to the left for column one. Existing bond payments are in columns one and two. Proposed bond payments are in columns three through six. So let me pause there. What I chose to assume is that you would start working on a project this year in terms of, you know, the design development, scope development, all of the things that it takes time to do, and that you'd borrow a small amount of money this year in order to fund those costs, and that in 2024, you would actually be in position to let construction of a project and at that time, we would fund that project. As I mentioned, these are my made-up assumptions, and these will evolve as you continue this discussion and we'll have to modify the assumptions accordingly. So I assumed you would sell essentially two bonds, one this year for just over $4 million and one in 2024 for 60-some million to fund, and to fund a new middle school. In the middle of the page, columns nine, 10, and 11, are other expenses that you pay out of the SAVE tax. Obviously finishing senior, technology annually. Now, I would note that there's $5,000 in that number that's bond-related fees, and I just bake it in the technology budget, not the, so your technology's $3 million a year. And then in column 11, I chose to assume that you would, because you have adequate cash, that you would, in 2014, you would prepay two of the district's outstanding bonds. You'd just take the cash you have and pay those bonds off. And that would create some capacity then to borrow for the next project. Now, you might say, well, why don't I just spend the cash on the next project and borrow less? That is something that we will study as we get from here to 2024. There may be reasons to consider one over the other. This is just, I chose to assume for this exercise. You doing okay so far?
Yep.
So from there, all I'm solving for is the last two columns are the, to try and keep the SAVE surplus positive. Couple of those years, you'll see negative numbers, but then when you carry over the prior year's balance, you're still positive. And we're just shooting for, solving for carryover. I stopped this bond issue under column five and six in 2045, so 21 years from when you would sell the bonds. And that leaves you essentially five years of the SAVE tax that would be unencumbered. If you did this exact scenario, and miraculously, we got these exact interest rates, you would have about 62.5 million that you could spend on a new project, and that is shown under column nine down at the bottom. And that's after transaction fees and bond reserves and the stuff that we do that are bond-related. The takeaway I want you to have from this scenario is look at column 17. There's basically no money left each year. If you do this project at this scope and with these assumptions, that's it for 20-some years. Does that make sense to everybody? I think you need to understand that as you look at the other scenarios and then consider what your size of commitment you want to make. Before we move on to the other scenarios, let me pause and ask if you have any questions.
You originally said the leftover not yet paid on senior was 29 million, or is that, did you mean 19 million?
So it's about 21 million. I'm sorry, I did say the wrong number. Okay. So down at the bottom, I just reconciled the, under columns, I guess, five and six are just my guesses at bond-related fees, the size of the bond reserve, things like that that get set aside when you sell bonds. These will modify as you choose dates and times and things like that. So, but I wanted to have placeholders for all those types of costs so you could think about what's actually available to the district to spend. So this is no enrollment growth, no growth for 30 years in revenue per student. If you turn the page over, then the second scenario is basically the same as the first. It is the same as the first, except that I threw the revenue per student by one and a half percent a year. So the SAVE surplus there under column 17, whereas it was, you know, $5,000, $6,000 a year left over, now it's several hundred thousand dollars a year left over, and it grows from there.
So Tim, just for clarification, what you're saying by growing one and a half percent per year, that assumes that the sales tax collected statewide grows by one and a half percent per year, and therefore the school districts receive that. So it's built into the cost of goods or the sale of more goods that are covered under sales tax?
Correct. Now, I chose one and a half percent. It can be whatever it is, but there is some art to the one and a half, and that is that the way that law is currently structured, when revenue growth gets above one and a half percent, then there's, there are siphons that take SAVE money off into other pots like the Skrur Academy stuff and then essentially property tax reduction stuff. And so while it's in theory possible to go above one and a half, all these siphons kick in and it won't, it's, we're not going to have the old days where we might get 4% revenue growth in revenues per student.
Those were added two years ago, two legislative sections ago?
Two or three.
Two or three.
Yeah. From this scenario, the one takeaway I want to have and that is, I want you to have, is that you would be able to bite off another project sometime down the road. Maybe it's not till 2030 or, you know, 2032 or something like that, but there would be a, if revenues grow over time and your enrollment stays flat, you would have some capacity to do another project, but it's going to be plus or minus a decade away from now. Doing okay? Questions, comments, concerns?
I'm miraculously following what you're saying.
So the third scenario is I stretched, essentially the same as the first, except that I stretched the bond out for the remaining life of the tax, which is through 2050. Tax expires in 2050 right now. And everything else is the same as the first scenario, but by adding those four years to the end, we are able to increase the bond capacity that you can spend to up around 81 million. And that's shown under the ninth column there at the bottom. Does everybody see that number?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that fits to the, what was it, 62.5 million on the prior scenario. Stretching the bond out, of course, then increases the interest cost. And so if you look under column six and you compare that to the prior page under column six, you'll see they're adding those years adds a fair chunk to the overtime interest 47 million to 28 million. You see those numbers? The other thing is that under this scenario, you can look under column 17 and you can see that there's no money left over at all in any of the years through the remaining life of the tax. So if this set of facts came about, this is your one project that you're doing from now until 2050, at least payable from the SAVE tax. Doing okay? If you flip that page over, then I did the same exercise, but I increased it by one and a, increased revenue per student by one and a half percent a year. Same basic facts, you have 80, 81 million that you can spend on a project today and you're probably somewhere out in the 2030 range, you would have additional borrowing capacity for a project at that time. With the, to kind of follow on on what Stan led in with, with the direction of the unspent, you know, pre-COVID, you were on a trajectory where there was going to be a problem with unspent in the very near future that was going to result in a need for efficiencies or cuts of some sort. COVID has bought you some time. ESER and those dollars have afforded you the opportunity to shift some things around, but that will end and the trajectory will pick back up. And so in my simple mind, I think we just pushed everything out maybe two or three years, but the same result is forthcoming. In my mind, finding ways, you know, to become more efficient is probably a key item at this point for the board to consider. Obviously, you can talk about program cuts as well. And so each of those has their pros and cons, but efficiency strikes me as something the board ought to be trying to figure out at this point in, and in its operations, which probably means efficiencies in facilities.
Thank you.
Can you question the board members?
Yes, sir. Just a simple question.
Yeah.
How soon and how much, I guess, is what, kind of does a review of what you've gone over.
I think you could start designing this year. Hire your team, figure out your site layout, start working on your, I call program.
Sure.
Academic program, whatever you want to call it. And work yourself to where you're ready to bid in, you know, winter of '23, early spring of '24, so you can start when weather breaks in '24. And I told you at the beginning, I made that up, and I made that up because I've watched you for a few years now as you take action, and it strikes me that that's about as fast as you can go. Now, maybe you can go a little faster, that's fine. My answer to your question was, we can certainly go slower. We can, it's going to, I'm sort of turning it back around to you. How fast do you want to move?
And I'm going to cover some of those talking points, some suggestions or recommendations here as we move forward, but, you know, I think, I really appreciate Tim being here because he helps clarify that in the SAVE, there are some decisions to be made and some choices that can be made relative to the district and how it could impact our, you know, our general fund, you know, how we could find ways to be more efficient. And efficiencies are important because it not only gives us an opportunity, and I would propose not only to get to the opportunity to flatten our budget, but to build in some dollars to be looking at programming for students and quite honestly, to build in some dollars through efficiencies to be able to pay a staff, because we're only as good as our teachers and our pairs and our bus drivers, and if we don't, you know, if we can't get more competitive over time, there's only one way to do that, and that is to get your general fund right, because it's not going to happen through student growth, at least not in the really short-term foreseeable future. And it's also likely not to happen through significant increases in supplemental state aid. So we have to get efficient to, first off, flatten off that trajectory, but then, second off, create room to add programming if needed for students and certainly to find ways to, you know, our base salary, first year, you know, across the board, we're on the lower end of acceptable, and we need to move forward. I pay a lot of attention, as I know Amy and Kevin does, with first-year teacher pay and career teacher pay in other districts. While today, we're kind of on that lower tier of the UEN, but it seems like every year we drop down a notch or two, and so we have to find a way over time to create resources to change that trajectory if we hope to continue to hire, retain the staff that we need for our kids and that they deserve.
If I could offer one other unsolicited comment?
I always appreciate that.
Thanks. If you look at the scenarios one and three and remember that in that column 17, there's no money left for, you know, extended periods of time. I'd ask you to be open to the possibility that you may need to consider additional taxes, whether they're voting, voting the extended pebble or even perhaps a bond issue for certain capital items for the efficiency discussion. As the, as your vet property values grow and your enrollment goes down and you get substandard SSA, what ends up happening is your tax rate goes down. And Kevin's, and Rick each year do a multi-year budget projection and it kind of shows that trend. You have some opportunity within your tax rate to consider adding this levy or that levy that might hold the line on the levy rate, but give you some additional funding for capital-related items.
That's a great point. That is an option. We, we're looking at the sales tax and sort of the, what that's going to do over time. The other next step possibility would be to be proactively go after a geo-bond or something and pay for projects through tax, you know, locally voted tax. There's some timing with that and obviously it has to go to an election, it has to pass by 60%, but that is another possibility. We have historically utilized SAVE, but that doesn't mean there couldn't be conversation down the road to look at other building projects that would create efficiency based on a bond referendum. But for today, these are the things you directly control and you control going out for a bond referendum, but the voters control whether that referendum is successful.
Tim, I want to make sure that I understand the difference between one and three and two and four.
Okay.
Can you say one more time?
Sure.
How, I understand that three and four are in the same way different from one and two.
They are different in that I added four years to the bond payoff schedule. That's the only difference. So one and three are identical, except that one goes for 21 years and three goes for 25 years.
Thank you. So both three and four have that same additional four years added to the bond payoff.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
And that maxes out the life of the sales tax.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. If I recall from the past when you gave presentations to us, like you've always been kind of on the conservative side in your estimates and your Tim's numbers and whatever.
Be fair.
And that's encouraged that your past track record has that conservancy to it, so that often things turn out better a little bit than they, than you predicted. So I'm glad to hear that.
The one caveat to that, and I do appreciate Tim's conservatism, is what he mentioned about the siphon at the 1.5%, because historically, the sales tax has probably been closer to a 2% growth.
Okay.
Higher than 2%.
It's close to 3.
Close to 3%.
Yeah.
So legislatively, they scooped or moved those dollars, and so that 1.5, while not a complete ceiling, there's a pretty big gap before we start receiving dollars again.
There's, oh, it has to be over 1% before you get any more.
So that, so while, you're correct, we... So that, so while, you're correct, we have, Tim's always given conservative numbers, legislatively, that's changed, so that 1.5 is a pretty fair number. I mean, it would have to, not that you couldn't get above that, but there's a, there's a place in there in which the state will be taking some of those dollars that they had in previous to three years ago.
That's true.
Did you just say, Stan, then, that the projected revenue growth per student at 1.5% is likely?
Historically, the growth of the sales tax has been significantly above 1.5%.
Right.
The state has capped it at 1.5% before they start taking the dollars. So I would say it's very likely that the 1.5%, and in different times, I'd be optimistic it would be well above that, but those days are gone. So I, I mean, historically, I'm not sure it's ever been below 1.5%.
Just the, you know, the recession years like '09.
Okay.
But yeah.
So that would tell us that, are we calling them options, Tim? What are the charts?
Sure.
Option two and four, with the additional 1.5% revenue per student, would be likely?
Are probably much more realistic than one and three.
Than one and three.
Yeah, correct. I agree.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tim, or should I continue with?
One more if I could. In number two, Tim, you said that those projections, another project could be added as of 2030 or 2032, something like that.
Yeah.
And where's the amount of money on the chart that would be available at that time?
So, great question, and I'm not gonna answer it as easy as you'd like. I didn't calculate how much you could borrow at that time, and we can do that as, but there's, if you look under column seventeen and you go to twenty, the year 2032, there's almost a million eight of Bonnie left over, million seven ninety-six. And then it grows slightly from there. So certainly, we've, we have the ability to afford an additional debt payment at that time of a million seven. And in, you know, kind of thinking through some quick math, that that means you may be a new bond in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range.
And that's true for both options two and four.
Correct, but not one and three.
And it's also assuming, correct me, Tim, is that the, if you did one project that maximized all of those resources, but if you did a project that was, you could do mul, that's the dollar amount, so you could do multiple projects in the short term, but just they can't exceed that dollar amount.
Correct.
So if you did a middle school and it didn't cost that much, it would be resources for another project potentially.
We would either shorten the bond payoff, or we would make the annual payments lower so there was room for another project, as we have done with the prior. Yes, the, all I'm solving for right now are max on the pessimistic scenario.
Yep.
And the pessimistic scenario is one and?
Is zero growth?
Right.
Yeah.
And I want to add one caveat to that, that's that stable enrollment.
Say that again, Kim.
Enrollment stays stable at the ten thousand one hundred and twenty.
Gotcha.
Because any declines in that will change this slightly.
It gets.
Or increases enrollment would also change it slightly.
And it's also to just keep adding fuel to the fire, relative to enrollment throughout the state, because it's a state pool of money.
Yeah.
And it's allocated on a per-student basis. So you could lose enrollment and still see an increase in sales tax dollars because the state enrollment grew or shrunk faster, because it's all, it's one pool, and so if the students, fewer students, the more dollars per student, so it's just relative to whether you lost enrollment versus your neighbors or anybody else around the state.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry to throw that in there.
So all four of these options are predicated on no student enrollment growth, but no student enrollment decline?
I declined at a hundred kids next year, and then flat thereafter.
A one-time decline.
Yeah.
Which we think to be pretty realistic, just looking at the number of students in preschools and, you know, four-year-olds in the community. We, we think the hundred is, beyond that, we don't know.
Your, your point, I think, is it could decline more than the hundred thereafter.
There's that potential.
Yep.
If you look at our historic perspective, the last six, seven years.
Birth rates, growth of Dubuque.
Housing starts, I mean, tend to be outside of our, the city limits a little further, and so, just are fewer kids. I think the other district in the city was experiencing similar things, and it's just a matter of there are just fewer kids here. Families are smaller, and the newer housing tends to be outside of Dubuque city limits. Hopefully, the southwest arterial will change that, but that's a ways away. Well, I'll keep moving, and if there are other questions. So I broke this into, or we broke this into three chunks. I'm gonna go through the elementary piece first, so maybe if we, it's probably six or seven slides. So if I could go through those seven slides, and then we'll go through questions about elementary, and then we'll talk about middle school. So you'll notice I'm not talking about high school, because we have two high schools, and there really isn't a scenario in which we would go to one. It would be probably the largest high school in the state if we would do that, so really, the efficiencies at the high school level, with a two, two-high-school system, it's just, it's not the conversation that is practical at this point. So let's start with elementary. So some of the things we considered as we put the data together, what are the enrollment trends? What do in-district transfers look like? We used to call that open enrollment, so if you're still thinking open enrollment, we call in, within the district, in-district transfers, it's an open enrollment. What are building capacities? What are the age of the building? Is it air-conditioned? Are there additional needs? So what's the future expense for that, for those buildings? Capacity for displaced students to be absorbed in contiguous buildings? And so is there room elsewhere where something could be absorbed prior to a building project? So clearly, if we built something, that, that's one scenario. The other scenario is if we can condense our existing number of attendance centers based on current availability. Again, remember, we're down five hundred and thirteen students with a projection of maybe as many as a hundred more next year. Vacation-related other schools, staffing considerations, and then future considerations. You know, four sections are efficient. I don't know of anybody, Tim, or others who are building schools in a community our size that are less than four-section. Two-sections are very expensive, three-sections are on the border, so new construction is almost always four-sections. That, so the size of a Kennedy, a Carver, an Eisenhower, so not mega-schools by any stretch, but schools that bring an economy of scale to play for a lot of this, you know, for the health of the district. Elementary feeders at some point, population shift, additional student program that might be needed, something that's not on here, demographics of our student enrollment centers. Should've added that to the slide, that's an oversight on my part, so what those considerations will need to be thought about in the, in, as we go, as we move forward. Here are the enrollment trends from largest to smallest. You'll see almost all of our buildings, you'll see a downward trend from the sixteen-seventeen school year forward. Fulton, I know a lot of folks here from Fulton today, has the largest decline from sixteen-seventeen, where there were three hundred and fifty-nine students, to our projection for next year, preliminary, but projections for next year would be two hundred and nineteen, and that is not part of the thirty-two percent decline. Lot of reasons for that, potentially, loss of housing in those areas, which also impacted Audubon with B-Branch and some of those types of things. But, so there you see where our enrollment is declining the quickest. I can come back to any of these slides once I get through them. This one gets a little confusing. Students in those buildings, so, for example, Prescott has a hundred and twenty-three of their current students are in their boundary, the number transferred in is ninety-two, percentage transferred in is forty-three percent. That's still part of the workout of the charter. We still have students who are there, grandfather didn't do the charter, so that's a portion of that. Fulton, a hundred and forty-four students live, who, to attend of the, I can't remember what the, let me go back here. What is our current enrollment? Of the two hundred and forty-three students currently at Fulton, a hundred and forty-four of them live within the boundary, and seventy-five are transferred in, requesting transfer in. So you'll see through the slide, and it gets bumpy, but we have a long history, twenty-plus years, of trying to approve in-district transfers as we can. It's a, it's a parental choice kind of a thing. We hear a lot about choice these days, we've been offering choice for a long time, based on where people work, daycare, a lot of teachers bring their children to the school they teach in, that sort of thing. So just that, I'll share that slide with you. Here's a capacity slide. There's the property square footage, so in other words, how big, how much green space is there? And then there's the building floor plan square footage, and I share that just to see the different size of the, of the buildings, but also if we would get to a point where we would need to look at an addition. So again, two-section buildings are inefficient, so if we would look at combining into four-section buildings or putting addition onto an existing two-section building, you know, clearly, we would need to look at the existing space there. Hoover, for example, lot of space at Hoover. Doesn't mean we necessarily would need to build something at Hoover someday, because there might be a chance to sell that land, who knows? So it, it just needed to see the square footage, not only of the building, but of the green space, because some of our buildings are fairly landlocked. Ready for the next slide? So if we look at then, current boundaries, and those that have contiguous buildings around them, again, you see where I'm kind of heading with this. Fulton has boundaries that connect with Eisenhower, with Irving, with Prescott, with Audubon, and a, and a small piece with Marshall. If, as we move forward, we look at Fulton as the building that would be decommissioned in the future, which is why we met with the Fulton staff this morning and told them it's just coming today, so they'd have an opportunity to hear this or watch it on TV, here are some of the opportunities. The current cost of Fulton, which is a two-section building, with utilities as well as staffing, is about three million three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars a year. So again, there is a significant expense. We have these comparables for our three and four-section buildings, and you can do the math and figure out what is the, you know, the cost per student. A lot of that is driven by class size. We've intentionally kept class sizes low because, and we would want to continue to keep an eye on that, particularly for our most at-risk students, which Fulton serves, you know, a lot of really great families and kids, but some, you know, come with some, a high free and reduced rate, and so some at-riskness certainly represented in that The other thing I mentioned was staffing consideration. One of the things that we know this year, and was shared this morning, is that there are currently sixty staff members at Fulton Elementary School, and that's from the principal, the teachers, to just all in. Based on our current openings, we have a guaranteed ability to tell all of our staff members that they'll have a job next year. We have many jobs that are currently posted through retirements, through people who are leaving the district for a variety of things, and so there's, that, those positions wouldn't be hired from the outside, they'd be filled from existing staff members. So that is important for us, too, particularly in a time of shortage, to make sure we're keeping the staff that we currently have. We would also not, our goal would not be to achieve three-point-three million dollars worth of total savings, right? Because with moving students, we would increase some, a few section sizes here. I think our goal would be closer to maybe a million dollars in savings, because we've got things that need to be, and not all of these dollars are general fund dollars, right? That's why it says all funding sources, some are special ed dollars, some are at-risk dollars, some are Title I dollars. So that is a building that should the, we move that direction, could be absorbed into the contiguous schools that I mentioned earlier. So it could be done prior to, so more quickly, so without need of new construction. So would not impact the, the saved dollars that were mentioned earlier by, by Tim, but would reduce our attendance centers by one. I would, and I won't be here, but it was important, I thought, for me to share this after having been here for ten years, to, from my experience, this would not be the only change at the elementary level over time. At some point in the future, we need to continue to evolve to three and most likely four-section elementary schools, and that could be creating additions onto existing two-section buildings where there's land, or building a new school, potentially out on the southwest arterial, and then decommissioning some, some other buildings. The next steps that I would propose, should we move forward with this, would be following this meeting, communicate with the staff, the families, and provide with them that an opportunity for feedback to the board and to the, to the staff about this proposal, about ideas that they would have in regards to this. We did meet with the staff, at least, and Amy and I this morning, just to let them know, hey, this is coming, and you might want to, you know, either watch it on TV or, or come. The next, if the, if the board should ask us to, so we're not making a decision tonight, we just need your permission to say, continue down this path. If that would be the case, between now and next Monday, we would put together potentially boundary, potential boundary changes to show of those contiguous schools, or potentially not, but starting with that as a premise, where those students could be absorbed at a future date, as early as next August. Because there's no new construction needed, we could do this by next August, so August of twenty-three, or at a later date, should the, should that be the direction the board wants to go. So once we do that, we'd be back here next Monday, after, if the board says, yeah, this still looks good, the board still isn't making a decision next Monday, it wouldn't be an action night until a full board meeting. We would do family information sessions that week, staff information sessions, and we, again, we're gonna do another one tomorrow morning, regardless of what the outcome today is, just to bring them up to speed, but I think most are here, but we'll, we'll be there anyway. Then the board takes action to approve a closing at a regular school board meeting. So again, could be as early as the April meeting or any date thereafter. Staff notification, the realignments, we would work closely with the union to place people in positions based on their seniority, based on their current work, and matching, matching those things up. Once that was all done, we do that involuntarily, so that they would have an opportunity to ask for a transfer, should something else open up later. We have paused, Amy.
Yes.
All hiring temporarily, until this decision is made, because we want to make sure we can assure everybody who's our employee an opportunity to continue to be, to be a school district employee.
When would this take place, a year from now?
Well, so.
Potentially?
Potentially, it could take place August twenty-third of this fall.
This fall?
It could.
Okay, well, you said twenty-three, that's why I was like.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say twenty-two.
Twenty-two, that's why I was like.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I heard twenty-three, but I kept thinking of fall.
Well, I do, too, but I wanted to make sure I was.
It could happen, it can happen at.
It can happen this coming school year.
It could happen this coming school year. That's the fastest we can go, because there's not new construction.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep, or any time thereafter.
A question, just, I know you have a lot of details, but the students, would you potentially assign different schools that they have an option to go to, or would you look at each family and see where the best spot for that?
So we would look at, and sometimes these things happen over time, right?
Yeah.
So there's your long-term goal, and then there's your short-term goal. And so the long-term goal would be to take the current Fulton.
Boundaries.
Boundaries and assign them to other buildings, so that as families moved in. so that as families moved in, as children are born, they had a natural school to go with. We would definitely open up our in-district transfer to those students so that if you got assigned to a building and you wanted to transfer somewhere else, we would facilitate that as well.
I guess I was asking more the short term to disperse the children.
And then we have done some other short-term things. When we redistrict the high schools twelve years ago, we did do some things with some grandfathering of students and a variety of things. So I think we could be a little bit flexible with that, but that would be a lot of the work that would take place in the next week or so. And we would look for feedback from, input from families and staff about that as well. So we would then have family information sessions, and then I know that there are folks who are really concerned about vacant buildings in our community, and so we would begin to look at options for those buildings, or for this building, if it would be full. You know, what can we do with the city, with other nonprofits, with other community organizations, to give that building a next life, to continue to serve the community, and hopefully, in my mind at least, young people. So we're not thinking of slapping plywood up and not mowing the lawn and letting the building deplete. We would be talking about a vital community asset, hopefully, working with our partners so that that would have a life beyond.
And something that we wouldn't be financing, though.
Correct, the cost savings would
We would let go, but we wouldn't have the ownership.
Correct.
Okay.
Would we sell that, or just?
That, I mean, that's the explore part. So yeah, I think we would have to look at all options.
If there's a buyer, you sell.
And I do think we do have some community partners who might be interested in that. Or might be two who would be willing, who wanted to split it. You know, different floors, different organizations, so. It's a beautiful building. It will live a life if we go this route beyond being a school. I have no doubt.
And another question with all the staff, we have sixty people to place.
Correct.
Would they, I guess that's something for HR, do they get choices? Is there, where there's an opening? Do they bump people because they have more seniority, those kinds of?
Yeah, that's a piece that we would work with the union on, what that process is going to look like. Some of the early conversations we've had, we would look at what openings we have in the district. We would offer that by seniority, that they would be involuntarily transferred into those positions, which means then they would have the option, if another job was posted, they could voluntarily put in for a transfer.
We would want them to be in the positions they want to be in, because we want to retain them.
Right, yes.
But there's a process by which you get there, and a significant part of that is seniority.
Yeah.
And we would try really hard, we talked about this this morning, to really put them in jobs that they currently have, just maybe in a different building. And we did talk also this morning with staff about putting together a team of staff members and families, and maybe even some students, about what that transition plan looks like. So that transition plan, number one, for staff, if they're moving to new buildings, but also for our students, as they, you know, are assigned or choose to go to a different school in the district. So we'd work together with them on a plan for that as well.
And I recognize this is not an easy conversation because there's a family down there that has been together for years and continues to grow. So I recognize that's not easy, and I appreciate you guys having ongoing conversations with the teachers, with the families, to let them know that they're loved. That's important, and that what we're trying to do, and it's very critical to our community, we have a responsibility to find ways to be efficient long-term. And there's a process that we are going through to have ongoing tough conversations, right? And so again, I appreciate all of those who are taking the time to at least listen to staff and be a shoulder. And I appreciate also that there is a guarantee that every staff will have a place in our district long-term. But Stan, can you talk about also, because I know in some of our Title I buildings, a lot of the programs and services that we are able to provide to the students, it's because it was a, I guess, Title I. How do we ensure that our students will still get that equitable service that they deserve?
So in some of those buildings, those programs already exist. And so that would be an enhancement of the existing program. Where students who went to a building that didn't exist, we would have to find ways to create that because we don't want students to be harmed. And Lisa, I don't know if you had anything you would share in regards to that, but really, it's going to be that creative. It's not just, okay, we're dividing up the map like a pie, and a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, and a fourth, and good luck, and go for it. But it is looking at where are those services currently, or how could they be added within those buildings? Because we don't want to, we want to positively impact students, so we want to create resources, once we get everything else settled out, that would increase opportunities for kids, not harm opportunities for kids. But that's going to take a lot of work with Lisa, and principals, and coaches, and connectors, and teachers.
Right, so a lot of that, the title funding would follow those students, depending upon what school they land in. If you look at those possibilities for the redraw of boundaries, like Stan said, many of those schools already have title programming, so that would enhance the title programming that's already in place. So those dollars technically follow them. Then when we also think about supplies and materials that we have purchased through Title I funds, those also follow to a title school. So in just looking at the possibilities, Marshall, Audubon, and Prescott are already our Title I buildings.
And quite honestly, Irving with change would likely fall into the Title I category as well because they're right on the boundary of Title I. So that would probably put Irving as a Title I building. I can't say that definitively, but that's what my gut tells me.
Right, this next month is the month that we would look at title funding per building, and if another building comes on, we look at those, the free and reduced lunch rate per building. And as Stan mentioned, Irving's on that border of that. And so if we were to close Fulton, we would possibly consider shifting some of those dollars to Irving as well.
Can you also talk about, I know Fulton, I'm not sure how many other elementaries were doing the co-teaching, what happens to that ability for us in other buildings?
Sure, so we talked with the staff this morning, and one of the things we talked about is those great practices, the exemplary work that they are doing to transcend that into other buildings and provide more opportunities for that co-teaching to exist in that high level of parallel or stationed teaching. So we would be able to provide, in a sense, more resources in those other title buildings for that to happen at a higher level. Where right now, you're really set by the title budget that you are allocated, and how many teachers perhaps that you can fund through that, where if those title dollars are following those students, we would be able to look at how we could provide more of that in other buildings.
I think it's important to state, and we have lots more time for questions, that this has nothing to do with students, staff, performance. It just has to do with the recommendation coming from where it's located, the size, the decline in enrollment. It's a great staff, it's a great place for kids, but we're in a situation where we have to look really hard at our two-section buildings, and Fulton just, in my recommendation, is the first one we have to look at.
Can you say a little bit more about, on slide twelve, we don't have to go back to it, but it showed that the salary and benefits of a two-section elementary school building, or specifically Fulton, is three-point-two-seven-five million. And Stan, you said we wouldn't be looking to extract that from the expenses, but perhaps a million.
Yeah, yes, our goal would be to look at somewhere in the million dollars. That's kind of what we've looked at preliminarily to say, you know, we, again, everybody's going to have a home. And some of those are going to be positions that just don't get filled from the outside. So we would set a goal of about a million dollars to do that, which means that, and again, some of those dollars aren't, I lost the slide here, but it is not all general fund. So that's going to take some of that off the top right away.
Right.
This special.
There it is.
Oh, you're moving it. I was like, there you go.
Who's in charge?
So, yeah, we have to figure that piece out, but that's probably a goal range of a million dollars that we would save in the general fund for next year. Not save.
My question, which isn't yet a question, goes to your notion, I think, Anderson, of current services received at Fulton by those students.
Yes.
I would hate for us to be looking at reducing those services and supports to kids in any way.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
I think, I'm with you a hundred percent, and I think the reality is there are room within those existing programs and supports in the other buildings. So those, so kids can move into that because of our, you know, there's enough, if you go back to this slide, you know, you'll see that there is reduction of students in, at Audubon, at Marshall, you know, not as much at Prescott. So those students are creating room in those exact programs today and for next year. So those, the students from Fulton, if that's where we land, would have spots in that program, making that program still very effective, just more efficient because it's sort of ten kids instead of six kids, or I'm just making up numbers. But so that's part of, yeah, but I would not recommend anything that diminished services for our young people. If anything, we're in a position where we need to continue to find ways to increase opportunities and supports for our kids. And the only, currently, the only way we can get there, student enrollment growth, not something that we can control, significant SSA increases, something I don't anticipate for the near future, or efficiencies. Which, I mean, I'd like to be talking about a lot of other things in my last three months. But this is just, I think, the service that I can provide to our families, current and future, by making these recommendations, and staff.
When you, with the slide that's on the screen now, the red column on the right, are those twenty-two, twenty-three projections with the transfer, with any transfer in or out factors involved?
Yes, that is with, so our in-district transfer is done. We'd open it back up because we want those to, but this does, this does take those numbers into account.
So the two-hundred-and-nineteen students projected to be at Fulton would include those
Yes.
Open enrolled in, or industry transfer in, continuing in that capacity.
Yes, or new ones who asked for it. The only thing that there's a little bit of squishiness with, it would be kindergarten.
Yeah, sure.
And, you know, moves in and outs, but that's
Do we have a number of our potential incoming kindergarten? Is it up, down, the same as last year?
It's down. It's down.
How many, approximately?
Currently, we're at about five-sixty-seven. Now, that's last time, in fact.
Right now, in kindergarten?
Right, so if you think about
Projected for next year.
Right, and typically, we look at a class being between seven and eight hundred students.
So when we look at kindergarten enrollment, we don't necessarily compare where we're at today with where we are in August.
Right.
We look at where we at today versus where we were at the end of last March, and the previous March, and the previous March, because we know we're going to see some growth between March and August. So the like data points are, where are we at the end of March in twenty-two, and twenty-one, and twenty, and nineteen? So we're not going to be down three-hundred-and-twenty kindergarteners. I don't want to creep panic. There'll be more who come in, but we're down from where we are, have been historically on this date. And we believe that's going to
So five-sixty-seven is a number that you know?
For sure.
For sure?
Yeah.
But the unknown is new families moving in.
I just would hate for it to be reported in the paper that, you know, our kindergarten class next year is down from seven-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-and-fifty. We know it marked, so that's why we look at like dates, that's why, I'm sorry.
We know it will be different in the fall.
We know it will be different in the fall. But, so that's how we look at like dates. But we, but we're down, and we're going to be down next year. I think that's why Tim used the decline of a hundred, and Kevin, so we need larger families, or more family housing, or more people choose to build houses in southwest arterial or something. This is just the trajectory we're at, and we can't lose five-hundred, soon to be six-hundred-plus students, and not respond to that in some way.
You know, in the years, long time that I've been on the board, I can now say, when I first came on the board, we went to a route where we did major staff reductions because we were looking at the trajectory, and it was done very dramatically. There was a harsh, it was almost like we cut off an arm while we were still swimming. We had to do it based on projections, and we kind of built that back up again. But we always knew that this was coming down the pike. And it's hard to look at these numbers as a district to say, what's happening? But it's the city, and it's hard to look at the school and to say what school it's going to be. It's never an easy decision to make, but it's a financial decision where we as board members have to take away, we have to really look at it where we know it's the recommendation of the staff, and looking at what we have to do financially for the district going forward. The best thing that I can hear is that we're able to retain staff. I mean, there have been situations where you close a school and you don't get to keep the staff. So we're at least in that good of a position that we can retain the staff, which is huge. It's, that is a big, big, big plus when other scenarios
And that's why we're here today, because when we looked at that staffing and, you know, this problem will only continue to compound itself.
It will, I mean, we've been, we keep saying, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And we've been kind of saying, oh, well, we'll just wait. You know, COVID let us kind of float there for a little while. Well, the reality is here, this is where we are. And I, it's a difficult, difficult decision to have to make, and it's not a fun place to be in, to be in the spot where we have to be the ones to make that decision. But it's the reality of why we are here. And I commend what Stan and your staff have done by looking at all of the scenarios. And this was kind of a shock, you know, as you kind of had this come forward. It's not like we all had in our mind what was going to happen. It's just, here's how it plays out, and when you look at the numbers, it's just, it is shocking, and it's sad to see. But it's the reality of where we are, in the business that we're in right now, and the way we are. So, but thank you for how you've at least presented this, for at least the visual.
So this is the elementary portion?
I know, we're not done.
So there are two other steps. What I would like is consensus of the board to take the next steps, which is to look at enrollment and where students would attend. And I'll do the things on the chart here. Meet with staff again tomorrow. Amy and Lisa are going to do that, I have another commitment. And then to communicate to parents tonight, give them an opportunity for their thoughts and input about moving forward, what that looks like. So basically, following these things. Again, not saying it's a done deal, because it can't be that for, until a regular board meeting, but at least take these next steps so that we can present to the board a next week's support services subcommittee meeting, a plan that you could respond to, and others can respond to about reorganizing existing buildings to accommodate the students who are currently attending Fulton, and to accommodate the staff that is currently at Fulton.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah, and knowing that the academic is not going to be affected. The students are going to be offered and have all the opportunities they have right now, and that's not going to be lessened.
That's going to be a lot of hard work on Lisa's part and the principal's part. And, you know, again, I really want to commend Chris, who's here, and her staff. I mean, they love the kids who go to Fulton. It's not a question of anything other than the dollars and cents. And if we don't take these steps, it's going to get worse. And quite honestly, my belief is this, this and our next presentation about middle schools is the next step, but not the last step, unless we start to see an overwhelming growth.
I agree, it's difficult to do to close a school. In the same token, I applaud you guys for coming up with a game plan here where it didn't cost us money to save money. And And that projection down the road is where we have to be looking at, in, in the elementary.
Right.
I know we're talking, at least this portion of it, it's not costing us money to save money.
It's hard for me to respond to your question in the absence of the middle school part.
Sure, we can go, keep going and come back.
Just to, just to explain why, not in any way to derail this conversation. We all acknowledge something has to be done, and something of significance that it not only affects today, it affects many tomorrows. I'm going back, Jim, to a comment you made at some recent meeting, and it had to do with sixth grade. I'm looking again at the decline in all of the elementary schools in attendance, and I understand the next part of your presentation will have many dollar signs connected with it. If we are to build a large middle school, or one of the other options that fall in line with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade being at the middle level. I was playing with numbers, and without more details than, than I had available at the time, looking at sixth grade as a substantial factor, in, in the day when, when we took sixth grade out of elementary schools, I was a part of the celebration that went with that, I was a principal at the time, and it seemed that that was a really appropriate move based on two factors. One, space needs, we were expanding, growing, enrollment increasing dramatically at the time, and we needed space. And so that was a logical way to take a district-wide action that affected all kids at that same age. We did have the opportunity then to absorb sixth grade into the middle schools. I think that's gone beautifully to the credit of a whole lot of people who have made a good middle design happen in all of our locations. My question goes to, I'm going back to Tim's projections for dollars. If we look at the next part of your presentation, assuming that, that the dollar amount that Tim used sixty million in his presentation, were we to peel off sixth grade and return sixth graders, which I believe was your point in a, a question that you asked, Jim? And it's, it's haunted me since then, in a, in a good way, in that it was something I hadn't considered. But were we were to pursue something of that line of thinking, it would in fact reduce the size of whatever we might do in collapsing three into two, because a third of the kids have been gone. And so the, the size of facility needed in order to educate our seventh and eighth graders in a middle school setting would be substantially reduced in size, such that it might require very little in the way of facility, and sixty million dollars could be considered differently as we look around.
Are you saying sixth grade back to elementary?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I didn't make that clear. Yeah, which I think was part of a question that you asked.
Yeah, I just threw that out there, and then I got to thinking about it more, but kind of thinking about, well, do we really have room in our elementary schools to be able to do that? And I don't know.
It, it would take, I mean, that's not something we would do for the fall, and again, we don't have to be in a rush, I mean, we, we could, we could study that. It would, um, one of the things that we're gonna talk about is, do we wanna create a feeder system to the high schools, and so that would obviously change that potentially, because you would have, if your sixth graders went back, you'd, you'd remove one of the towers at Roosevelt that could then be used for...
Right.
Seventh and eighth.
For something, yeah, for seventh and eighth.
Right. It would reduce the size of Roosevelt by a third, and would make that space available for other seventh and eighth graders.
Correct, correct, that's what else.
Currently in some other location. So I only throw it out because I, I understand you're, you're moving us forward with a process that's really already begun, and, and thank you for that. I wouldn't want the Fulton faculty, staff, families, kids to find out later that that was something of a consideration. But at the same time, I'm wondering if it's our, should be our only line of pursuit, and I know...
Well, let me do the middle school piece, and then we can circle back around and have this conversation. Because I think, you know, any idea is possible, and this is one set of thinking, and how do we do, it does probably delay, but again, speed's not the, the most important thing, for sure. Timing does matter, but not, you know. So let me just talk about the middle school piece. You'll see a similar story at the middle school, you'll see reduction in students led primarily by Jefferson, a little bit less at Washington, and even some at Roosevelt. So you'll see the change there. You'll notice that Washington and Jefferson combined are roughly the size of Roosevelt, that'll be important for you later. There are in and out percentages, how many come in, how many come out. Again, that's more a, I think a testament to the board's willingness to open up school choice within the, the district for in and out transfers. Square footage, again, you'll see Roosevelt is about twice the square footage, a little bit more square footage, and significantly more property, and that was, I wonder if that's... Well, it's because they have the, the field out front, too, so significantly more square footage in property as well as in the building. The cost difference in what running the, we've shared this slide multiple times over the years, so if you look at the cost of Washington and Jefferson, and you combine those costs, and you look at the cost of running Roosevelt, there's a three point eight million dollar difference to educate roughly the same number of students. So that's the cost of having three attendance centers versus having two. So just trying to illustrate there, there. I always want to make sure we're not, the recommendation's not to put Washington and Jefferson into a second middle school and leave Roosevelt as it is. This would be, uh, the proposal would be to create feeder schools for the high schools, so that all students going to Hempstead would go to one middle school, all students going to senior would go to the other middle school, because that does put the district, from a middle school perspective, in the same place demographically as our high schools are, which is basically they're a mirror image of each other, from a free and reduce, from a male, female, from all of those things. And so there's a great opportunity there for alignment of curriculum, alignment of co-curricular activities, we always worry about that handoff between eighth grade and ninth grade for co-curriculars. So in this proposal, it would be to look at feeder, feeder middle schools to the high schools, not just leaving the boundaries alone and combining Wash and Jeff, it would be the Hempstead boundary is one school, the senior boundary is another, and with that, again, is the three point eight million dollars in operational savings potential. Okay? So to me, we're not at a point, because we don't have the dollars, and one of the reasons we wanted Tim to come here today was to, to share with you where those dollars were and where they weren't. So what we would be looking for, should we go with this plan, would really be to create a goal, and again, this is just sort of our thinking, staff create a goal to say by the fall of 2026, so in four years, we would have two middle schools, and that's all. And that we would create a subcommittee of board members, of middle school folks, of community members, of others, to study what that looks like. Again, one goal that I would portray, but again, doesn't have to be, would be feeder schools to our high schools, because it does create opportunities academically, it creates opportunities socially, and it also creates opportunities to look at the demographics. It gives us an opportunity to develop consistency of educational facilities. What does that mean? It means that, Greg, what's the square footage of a typical classroom at Jefferson?
About five twenty-five.
About five twenty-five. Did I see Jeff come in? Jeff, what's the square footage of a typical classroom for you, nine hundred?
Right around there.
So it, it's larger learning spaces, more flexibility, more small group, science classrooms are very specifically designed to support science, it just, it, so when I say consistency of educational facilities, so the teachers have that same workspace tools to, to make sure that students have those same opportunities. Again, does it create more efficiency so that we can look at opportunities for new and enhanced programming? And then again, always in my mind is, we have to be more efficient so that we can afford a staff that we, that we need. And then location, you know, this doesn't come, it's a two-year planning process, and then a two-year build process. So the first six months of that planning process are the where, some of the what, and then the, then you've got that work with the, with the architects to, to really fine-tune what that looks like, and then two years to build it. So that was the middle school part, much more concise than, than the elementary, but again, because there's more time, because we can't build anything of significance for the next four years anyway. He did indicate maybe that there was some flexibility there, maybe it would be three years.
Three years.
But...
He said, he said, design phase twenty twenty-three and...
Begin construction. Construction's gonna take about two years.
Yeah, so deep.
Yeah. Our Roosevelt middle school costs about thirty-six million dollars, and that was sixteen years ago?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years ago, so clearly it would cost us more with inflationary costs of materials than the thirty-six million. I'm not sure it would cost, that's why I asked him that question, could you do multiple, you know, if a middle school's gonna cost you, I don't know, fifty or fifty-five, I, I'm just totally making up numbers. So that would be the proposal that we bring tonight. Again, open to suggestions and thoughts, would be to begin very, having a very specific goal, we would say to the community, we're moving to a two-middle-school solution, the savings there, you know, really takes a significant step in, in budgetarily, you know, number one, stopping the reduction of our investment balance, but not only flattening it out, but flattening it out with some room to add programming if needed, and to look at costs of our staff.
I understand the feeder school concept and the boundaries that we have for our high schools, would you estimate that those would remain about the same?
So I would, we have had, and Lisa's asked questions in the past about senior getting a little smaller than, than Hempstead, next year we have...
Four twenty-six.
Going to senior.
As I heard, it's about three eighty-seven.
So we have a significant jump next year at senior. So those are kind of gonna ebb and flow over time, and so while Hempstead's been a little bigger, next year's freshman class will flatten that out a little bit, and so I think over time, those boundaries still serve us pretty well.
Probably pretty much the same.
That would be my recommendation, because, you know, I was starting to get, there's a, maybe two, three hundred student difference, but next year we're gonna make up, you know, I didn't do the math, fifty or sixty of those students, so if we have a couple of years like that, they'll be back to the same size again.
And we can always look at that a couple of years down the road. And it's not off the table to, you know, we have a location of Washington and Jefferson, to look at one of those schools and add on is also...
Absolutely, I think that's the, the first six months of the committee work, to figure out what is the right thing to do. So it could be in addition to an existing facility, it could be a standalone facility on a current site, or on a, on a site to be named. I mean, I think that's gonna take some time and some, some work to figure out what's the best case, and quite honestly, we just didn't have time to, to get all of that worked out, because it does take, you know, with a new facility, the design phase alone takes far longer than I would have ever guessed, it does when we, when I first started this, you know, eighteen years ago.
I do like the idea, when you mentioned having the two middle schools, and making them equal in opportunities for the, the classrooms, the opportunities for the, the science labs, all those things that maybe not all our schools are equitable in those offerings.
Our teachers do a great job of making that, but it just, the facility does matter.
Yeah.
The facility matters.
And that would be one of our priorities when making this decision.
Sure, yeah, if we build something, we would want it, regardless of size and who it's accommodating, we would want it to be of, it, it's what we're attempting to do or are doing with senior and Hempstead, with renovations on both buildings.
And to have a space for a football field, or, you know, practice fields, for all of that, too, to make sure that they're equitable and outside opportunities, too.
Yeah, and there's a lot of interesting opportunities with turf, and lighting, and, you know, time, and so, yeah, a lot of those things have to be explored.
Yeah.
So you're looking at us basically for the next board meeting?
At some point in the future.
To have some direction, some goal, that we would move towards the middle school by two thousand twenty-six?
I think we have to set a goal, I think we, we kind of plant a flag in the ground and say by 2026, we're gonna have two middle schools. Not that that couldn't change either direction once the process started, but I do think it's important to set a timeline and say this is what we're looking at with, with middle schools. Again, we started this conversation two years ago, COVID derailed it because we spent all of our time figuring out, you know, COVID mitigation and all those things, plus PSR funding, and those funds that were made available to us really were to keep consistency for families during that time. We did that, but now, hopefully, we're on the other side of that. We know we're on the other side of that financially, we'll see if we're on the other side of it, in the other aspects of that, but, so now it's time for us to, I believe, it's time for us to make these decisions, and again, I'm, but have, I'm trying to set my, my, my...
You're gonna miss all the fun.
I'm trying to set my...
You're gonna miss all the fun we're gonna have in the next two, three years.
I know.
Invite me to the grand opening.
She's gonna miss out on all the good stuff.
Somebody will keep you updated.
Well, I'm not moving, so I'll see all of it.
We know, we know. A little time, Jim.
I'm not moving. We have the papers here, though. So elementary school, middle school, and then the last piece, I'll do it because it's very quick, and then we can talk about it as a whole.
Can I throw something out here? A little bit relative to what you mentioned about the sixth grade. If, if indeed, for example, Roosevelt was just a seventh and eighth, and you'd have the, you wouldn't knock down one of the towers, you'd probably use it, Roosevelt would end up being a much larger school.
Not larger than it is, but larger...
Larger than the, larger than the...
Larger than the second middle school.
The second middle school, yes.
Yeah, three times the size.
Yeah, and so...
But that wouldn't necessarily mean that whatever you did with the second middle school wouldn't be redone in whatever manner necessary to make sure that there was equivalent opportunity. It would, it would just mean the two, the two wouldn't necessarily be the same size.
And they couldn't really be feeder schools.
But they wouldn't be the theater schools, then. They wouldn't be the theater schools for the high school.
That's, that's not a, I, I understand there's something tidy about that. For me, that's not a huge driving factor, we're a standards-based curriculum, we have standardized curriculum, it comes down to what are we providing in terms of programming beyond the classroom, and then let's look at that and make that right, whatever that means, so.
You could put an addition on to Roosevelt and make it also with the eighth graders.
There you go.
You're good.
Well, that's true.
Be a lot more busing.
Yeah, it sure would, but, I don't know.
Yeah.
And then I also have concerns about like the older sixth grade kids being on the buses with the kindergarteners, and my daughter rides a bus, she gets an earful every day, I know, so that would be concerning as well. I also like the idea of making facilities more efficient, energy-wise as well, would help save money, and more equitable by making new, possibly building a new facility would help with those opportunities. And then would we continue to operate all buildings with the sixth grade?
Oh, I, I don't know, I'm just, I, I don't have a grand plan to present by any means. I'm just looking at hearing Tim say sixty million, and we couldn't do anything till 2050 with anything else. That concerns me.
Kind of limits us.
That's a long haul of not being able to...
But we couldn't do anything using this funding, right? I mean, it's not to say like, the board in the future, if they wanted to do something, could pursue other types of options, that maybe we haven't looked at before, like a bond or something like that, so.
We, we've never had a... We, we've never had a bond issue, have we, Tammy? I think you commented on that.
No, we haven't.
We have not. I mean, down the road twenty years, you know, I don't see anything like that ever flying right now. A bond issue that's not even considered, we're not even considering that right. I'm not considering that to say, I don't think that would be something right now. Down the road, you know, twenty years when we're not here, you know, that's a whole different, I'll still be here voting.
Well, we don't want to leave.
We hope so.
Well, I think, and I think Tim's point was though that because of where we're at with enrollment and some other factors, we are going to see our levy rate drop. So there is potentially at some point in the future a chance of just not drop your levy rate, but.
And I think that's a good example for this year when I come to the meeting next week. I sent you the proposed levy rate that's going to be in the paper. And it is dropping for those exact reasons that Tim talked about from the prior year because of the increased evaluations, our low SSA and the decline in enrollment. So that is happening now.
So it does, it poses some interesting questions.
For me, it's very easy to say yes. Let's, let's say we're going to make a move to from three to two middle schools. The efficiency is obvious. How, for me, it's about a sixty million dollar number going to something that sets in in motion, nothing else happening for thirty years. And, I mean, there, there are other things that we need to be attentive to. So that concerns me. That's why I'm pulling back your comment about sixth grade. What about that? I guess I would like to, I would like to at least know more about that. What would those numbers look like? I don't know how many. I'm guessing there are about seven hundred middle school sixth graders.
About seven fifty, seven sixty in grade.
Yeah.
All of our, yeah, all of our grades from graduation through our, you know, you use seven fifty as a conservative number.
So I'm, I'm thinking of the slide where the element, you nicely showed us the drop in enrollment in the elementary schools over the past five years. And clearly, just if you said seven hundred fifty divided by thirteen and about, what, fifty, sixty kids per school? Again, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just playing with raw numbers and saying clearly our schools in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, which is the baseline year, had that many more kids in each of them than what they have now or are projected to have next year. So in terms of space available, that doesn't seem to concern me. So I, I guess what I'm asking for is that we at least give some thought to that unless the rest of the board isn't interested in entertaining that at all. I just am concerned about Tim's numbers and how long we're frozen for other things.
Personally, I like the progress we've made by bumping the sixth graders into the middle schools.
The progress really?
Yeah, the academic, the culture, you know, getting the sixth graders into, introducing into the middle school. They're not interacting with the seventh and eighth graders, but they're at that next level of their life. You know, I, I really like the functionality of the sixth graders with the middle school kids.
Do you think, Lisa, that we've had an increase in student achievement because of that? Is that what you just said? I heard.
I, I don't have any data on that.
Yeah, okay.
But my own kids experience, I had kids in the elementary and then when they switched over to, my youngest one went to the middle school for his sixth grade and all the other ones did. And I just, I saw the maturity level, you know, increase by moving to a different building. And then they were kind of set for three years before they went to the high school. That's my personal opinion. And the structure that Roosevelt was built on was for the three, three grade levels too.
I don't think it does any harm for us to, to look at options, right? Right now, we have the options that we have in front of us and I think we all can agree we need to save money because we owe that to the taxpayer. We need to make sure we retain and keep our good staff. That's something that we need to do. That's very important. The programming, we want to make sure that it doesn't change and that we are providing equitable service for now and generations to come. And what that looks like if we bring the sixth graders back or up, it's just not in front of us. So we don't know what we don't know. And what we don't want is for us to delay things that will cause more harm to the district because that's not us being accountable to the overall. But I don't think it harms us at all to have the best options to make the best decisions.
Would the sixth grade option make a difference in the elementary in Fulton?
I don't know.
I mean, if we're.
That's not the intention of my comment. I'm looking at two thousand fifty and saying.
Well, you had, you had referenced it in the, I'm just trying to understand because I really don't know. You referenced it that you didn't want to talk about the elementary until you talked about the sixth grade option. So to me, is that the idea that you were thinking that it wouldn't affect that? I'm just trying to go by the comment, honestly, because I don't understand.
Sure. My thinking was, Stan was looking for a feel from the board, I think, to say, do you want to pursue this Fulton thing? We have a, a set of process steps and a quick timeline. I'm not opposed to that. I just don't feel ready to say yes or no to that until we explore whatever might be viable options for us. That's certainly a viable option. Are there others that we should be looking at as well? The one that comes to mind for me is the sixth grade.
So.
And I can argue both sides of that too.
Do you want to see the, what would be helpful? The student achievement data you mentioned for sixth grade, we'd have to look at room availability. That would change the, not only at Fulton, would change the availability in the other buildings as well. Because if you're going to add into a three-section building, three sections of sixth grade, that's three classes. So it does, it is a pretty big domino.
So we're delaying the efficiencies at the elementary school more or less by doing that.
You'd be looking at doing it at the earliest a year from now versus this fall.
Or complicating it a little bit.
By a year.
By a year.
Potentially, yeah.
Because one discussion we've had in the course of this is, is needing to not, you know, we were talking about Fulton today, but this was kind of the beginning, as Stan said, of discussions about elementary schools looking towards the future as well. And I know we've talked as a board about looking at climate control issues and making sure all of our buildings are air-conditioned and that has an impact on these elementary buildings for sure. And so just one thing I'm thinking about related to moving sixth graders back, there's a few things that come to mind, but just how does, how does that move complicate, like Tammy is saying, those future discussions about where we're going with this long-term discussion about elementary schools.
Of efficiencies.
Right, for efficiencies. And then, you know, the other thing I think about is just like our middle schools have created such a good culture with sixth, seventh and eighth graders. They have a way to approach that. The teachers know what they're doing. The elementary schools have been functioning without sixth graders and have a culture around that, kind of what Katie was talking about. Like, that's a pretty big shift to move everybody around with that. Even if there is space available, it, it could still have some pretty big ramifications in terms of what that does to the, the culture in those buildings and what's happening. I mean, the teachers are awesome, of course, and you'll handle it because you're amazing. But that is a pretty big adjustment from what we've been doing with, you know, the current system we have to moving every sixth grader back in. And I guess one thing around the two-feeder school option that stands out to me as a benefit is the fact that we know that our, our boundaries for high schools are mirrors of each other, as Stan said. And that when we think about the issues of equity, demographics, like who's going where, like it matches that. And letting students start that in sixth grade, I mean, maybe a year doesn't matter, but getting that opportunity in sixth grade a little earlier to have that kind of experience is an advantage in a way to me that helps prepare them for what's coming in high school too. So, and addresses maybe some of those equity issues that we look at as a board. So those are just some initial thoughts I have. I mean, don't mean that it couldn't happen. I mean, but I, I am worried that we would delay these hard discussions a little bit.
So if, yeah, that's a decision that, so, so the opportunity cost of the study to look at sixth grade and when at middle schools or at elementary schools is nine hundred thousand or a million dollars because that's the savings we would project for saving for next year. We have, I mean, that's a large number, but it's not a catastrophic number. But the key is that the district has to be committed to finding efficiencies. You cannot continue the same path.
And I think you guys would have come up with this option, you were at the meeting with the sixth grade, you heard of it. And if you, if I don't, if you didn't see that as a viable.
I mean, we did, we did not look at the, the data around that. So we can, we can do that, but then it does.
It delays it.
It delays it a year.
It delays it, yeah.
Which is a million dollars. And again, that's, you know, in a hundred fifty million dollar budget, it's a million dollars. So it's not, it's, as a percentage, it's not huge, but as a dollar, it's going to add up pretty quickly. So it's going to then increase the timing at which you have to probably do some other savings next year. The staffing issue is part of one reason we jumped on this is because when we looked at the size of staff and staffing positions available, I would encourage that whether we do it now or whether we push it back a year, we try to find the time at which it does not cost staff positions because there is a shortage and we cannot hire great staff as easily as we have historically. And so whenever it's done, it has to be done with an eye towards how do we do it at a time when there are enough fluid, enough fluidity in positions that we maintain open positions to transfer existing employees? But, and again, I'm.
I, I'm not in support of that.
We can pull sixth grade data by next week, I think, as I make a promise for my staff.
Is that, I have a question here. Is that mutually exclusive, the sixth grade as opposed to the two middle school? Those are separate factors, aren't they? To have, to have a goal by two thousand twenty-six to have two middle schools, they're not directly related.
But it directly relates the, the elementary portion of it.
Sure. Yeah, it's directly related to the Fulton question, but not to the middle school question. It's the work of the, of the subcommittee.
Yeah, it would relate, it would relate to the Fulton question.
What, to me, what it relates to is whether, you know, if we have a glass of water from now till two thousand fifty and we spend all of it at, in one place. Kate, you brought up air conditioning. There's no money for air conditioning if all of the water is going to one place that isn't air conditioning or pick anything else from the facilities plan that might have other costs associated with it. That's the only reason from my point of view to be talking about sixth grade is to say, do we want to spend all of our available facility resources in one place? Or do we look at our facilities plan that we, we have in front of us already and say, you know, there are other things on here that are worthy things for us to look at? For me, air conditioning is one of those. I think we talk about equity. I think we have some gigantic inequities around that issue. And so, but that's, that's about one example. But we literally lock ourselves, I mean, Tim just told us, we lock ourselves out of other facilities, substantial pieces if we spend all of our facility money in one place, when we may have an alternative or maybe there are other alternatives.
If we would spend it all.
Right. And I'm, I didn't hear that as we, or even this, that we're definitely doing that, right? I mean, because depending on which of these scenarios, like one of them is eighty-one million dollars. Like, I'm assuming we're not spending all of that on an element, or on a middle school.
I would guess to me, and then just going, social studies teacher predicting finances, just to be clear. So thirty-six million dollars fifteen years ago on Roosevelt, I'm assuming a like-sized, similar facilities these days will be north of fifty or fifty-five million. That's completely a guess. We would be architects and people way smarter than me to give me those real numbers.
That'd be a brand-new facility.
If that was a brand new.
Oh, a new facility.
A brand-new facility, brand-new facility, not changing on, adding on or doing whatever to exist.
Sure. Those costs very wildly, I'm sure.
Wouldn't we incur more expense if we brought the sixth graders back to the elementaries? Then we wouldn't close any of the elementaries. Then we're going to have more improvements to most of those middle schools, or elementary schools to fit the sixth graders back in.
Bringing sixth graders back, which to me is not bringing them back, it's leaving them at the elementary. When, when we first took the sixth graders from the elementaries, we moved them out of the elementaries to the middle school, obviously. In this case, it isn't like you're saying, go, oh, no, come back. Instead, you're saying to fifth graders at the end of some year, you're going to wait a year to go to middle school. You'll still be sixth graders, but you'll be in this location, not a different location.
But aren't we going to incur more immediate elementary school building expenses if we?
I don't know. That's, those are the kinds of things we need to be looking at.
So that's more immediate expense now.
Is it, is it the board's consensus to study this or is it one person's, I mean, is it one person's consensus to do this? Because it, it, it's, you know, they're, they're.
How long would it take to get the data?
You said a week?
I mean, could we do it by next Tuesday at Programs? We would then need to set up another special meeting because there are multiple steps regardless of what path we take if something's going to be done by August. If, if it's, you know what, it's almost April. We're going to make these decisions for August of twenty-three, then there's more time. But if it's to get to August of twenty-two, the clock is ticking because Amy and the HR department need to get positions posted. If we're not moving current staff into those positions, we would need to get into the hiring game in the next couple of weeks at the latest. So that, that's what weighs on me a little bit from a timing perspective.
The difference for me is the, the decision about Fulton versus the decision about a district-wide facility plan. That, that, the Fulton decision is a singular decision of, of great impact. I don't mean in any way to diminish that, but it affects that group, not the whole of the group. Seems to me the board is looking at what is, what is this district's facility plan to save money in the going forward? And that to me is not a one-school issue. That's a district issue.
Right. And that's why we brought the middle school forward because it's where the biggest savings is short term.
Sure.
But there, we can certainly try to put that together. I'm looking at faces. By next, by next Tuesday. Monday's probably a push. Tuesday, you have an extra twenty-four hours. We pretty much have a model that we can do anything here in a hundred hours, so. So, but if we would then decide to move forward with the Fulton plan, we, we cannot delay that decision much more than another week because we have to find homes for these folks and we can't. We also can't delay hiring processes or we're not going to have what we need.
I wish you would have let them know ahead of times to have this information available today.
But also, it's not just the building, it's these students, that we have three middle school principals with us tonight. What, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but what is your thoughts on moving the sixth graders back into an elementary building?
I don't think that's fair to ask though.
I know it's not. And I'm not expecting you to answer, but that's a question I have.
Depends on the day, right? Who's ready to retire tomorrow?
You know, there's a lot more to think about than, you know, we're trying to crunch numbers to save money and be sustainable, but you also need to look at the well-being of them.
Admittedly, I've asked you to make a decision in pretty short notice.
And we asked you to ask us to make a decision.
The clock is ticking really fast for me personally and this is something I'd like to, but it doesn't have to be about me. But the other piece is the budget. I worry about the budget, but again, there are other mechanisms for, for doing that. How about if everybody thinks about that for a minute and I'll go to step three that might be easier and then we could swing back. All right. Other district land assets, i.e. soccer complex. Soccer complex was appraised at one point five million dollars. The lease expires in May of twenty-three. We met with the soccer alliance leadership prior to that meeting. It last May. There's a two-year notification. We've notified them that we intended to consider nullifying that lease. If we sell the soccer complex proceeds, the proceeds legally have to be used to support district facility needs, air conditioning, whatever it would be. So those are one point five million dollars that would go directly into some. So that was our one point five million dollars that would go directly into some type of basically pebble funded type of thing. I believe the next steps that we need to do, we, we hear people are confused or they don't know what we want to do, which I'm not. I think we've been pretty clear, we've had meetings with the leadership. But I would recommend that we determine, A, whether we want to sell it or not, because we've been leasing it for a dollar a year for thirty years. My recommendation is to sell it, that just like with the swim team was able to, the swim folks raised a million dollars, I believe, the soccer group could if they should choose to do that. And then we use that one point five million dollars for some project to be determined by the board. But I think to do that in a, in a way that's open and transparent would be for the board at a very soon, in a meeting very soon in the month or the next two months, say this is our asking price, this is when we're going to sell it and let that process start. I, I think that we just need some definitive action. It's a year before it can be sold, can't be sold until May, so a little over a year. So it gives plenty of notice to those who are interested. So of all of the things, you know, I think this one, I, I understand that the soccer alliance has a great interest in it and I get that, but I also think that the taxpayers need to maximize this. This land was long before my time, but was acquired to be Roosevelt and Carver. Obviously Roosevelt and Carver were built somewhere else. So to look at this and give people enough warning to say, we really are serious about selling this and not taking a dollar a year rent. Because it does have value and does provide opportunities for other things as we've talked about, whether that be air conditioning or whatever. So that was, I just wanted to get to this third piece before.
I noticed in the statement there you said the interested party is the community. So there, there could be a situation where there's more than one party that's interested.
There could be, yeah. The appraised value, we've had it appraised three times and the appraised value, the latest one, and they've all been relatively consistent is, is at that amount. But I guess the real value is what somebody's willing, able to pay for it.
Is this something, you know, the sale could take place May of next year. Would we want to set a price now so that potential buyer would know what they have to say for?
I think that would be a way to move forward.
I think so too.
Yep, I would do. Next, by May, because it, the lease expires.
A year from now, yeah.
A year from now, yeah. May, May board meeting, it's longer.
It could, it is, there's no time limit on that. The only time limit was to give them two years' notice and we did that last year. So anytime between now and then, I just think to be fair to the interested parties that we say we really are moving this direction and this is the timeline. And so if there is funds that they need to raise, that gives them a target and an opportunity to do that.
I agree with that.
And do you want to talk about the appraisal now or are you just throwing that out as another?
I just put that out there. I don't, I just think it really will need, I think we need to commit to what our next steps are with the soccer complex. And if it is to sell it, I think we should set a price. If it's not, if it's to continue into the current arrangement, that's, is not my recommendation, but it's certainly within the board's prerogative. Then we need to make that clear too, because there are groups trying to figure out what to do. And so if we could.
Is this something we would vote on Monday?
It, at some point, yeah, I don't know, Kevin, we'd have to look at what that process looks like. But yeah, at some point there'd need to be a.
Public hearing?
Yeah, we'd have to move forward. I just really want to be more concrete about what the future of the soccer.
I believe.
Move forward because I think there's.
We're twelve months away, it's time to make a statement.
I think people are waiting to know. So that was the easy part. And I would just give everybody a little break, but so we can pull together, well, we can pull together around sixth grade by next Tuesday, if that's the prerogative of the board.
But we should agree if we want.
Yeah, do we want to?
Do we agree we want to have that discussion? Because I do think, you know, we've had this middle school discussion a couple of times. And so that feels like a kind of new direction to me that we haven't discussed before. So, and it's not that we shouldn't discuss it, it just feels like, I'm, I'm concerned about, about what it does for our processes a little bit. And I, I do appreciate your concern Nancy, because I think it is very valid that we do have to think about the future and what we can do financially. It seems to me like we can attend to that concern though with, we have careful planning through this process of two middle schools, whatever that looks like. So it doesn't, you know, I think there's opportunities to still attend to your concern about not blowing all of this money in one opportunity and making sure there's funds for future projects should they arise through that four year, the two year planning process before we build. And maybe I'm not thinking about it in the same way as you, but to me, maybe that's still on the table, that we can address what Tim has brought to us and, and that concern.
As we look forward and consider a thirty year decision, which is what I think that is, we haven't looked at the notion of a Southwest arterial presence of, of a school. And in that, in that lies a regular loss of revenue to us that's embedded in a different thing. And that's in the loss of kids to a neighboring district. So for me, it's hard to consider a thirty year facility decision without looking at the fact that that's about a million and a half a year that doesn't come to us because it goes to an adjacent district. And over thirty years, that's, that's a lot of revenue. So I, I would hate for us to consider a long term facilities plan without that as a part of it. And I do think that, that then gets into dollars substantial enough that it would be hard to say, let's spend sixty million on a middle school. That, that's where I'm coming from, which would, I believe, unless I'm wrong, exclude creating a Southwest arterial presence.
Yeah, I have to go back through these projections from Tim. I, I saw them the same time that you did and I think I, so, you know, if it's, which one of these scenarios is the most likely? Which I believe he said was number one and three, right?
Two and, no.
Two and four, two and four. He said two probably is the most.
Two and four had the one and a half.
Two is the most.
So two and four.
Two and four.
Gives you the eighty one million.
Two and four are the.
Does have the one and a half percent.
Eighty one has the growth of them.
Yeah, one and a half percent.
So it's the extra years on the bond or not, sixty two or eighty one.
So I want the board to have the information they need to feel comfortable. I don't want you to ever think in hindsight, we wish we'd had more information. So we can provide more information next week if, I mean, these decisions don't have to be made tonight, but the clock is ticking if we're going to in fact do the, with any of the portions of this for August of this year.
But I think we also need to be clear as we're making the decision, what, what information do we feel that we need in order for the team to go back and bring it back to us to make the best decision? So I hear, you know, Northwest Arterial, sixth graders, what would be, how could we save, you know, staff, money, programming? What else do we want to see in the data so that way we can make the best decision? Because I do feel the sense of urgency as well to do all the things we say we want to do here.
Yeah, we can't keep coming back to the table with new scenarios. We can't do that. It's, it's analysis paralysis and we're in that spot right now.
Is this not a work session? Did I misunderstand what we were talking?
Well, no, but we were all asked, what information do we want? What information? And you said you were thinking about this from a meeting ago that Jim had proposed, that I would have thought you would have asked Stan and his team to have that information available for us.
I am asking that because that, as we were, as I was gathering information for this meeting, that was the thought that came back to me. So I'm asking it as soon as I could have asked it, other than earlier today perhaps. And, and I'm comfortable asking it now. We want to make the best decision. We don't want to make the fastest decision. I'm not trying to slow the process in any way. I would hope you would know that. This is not about slowing the process. This is about saying, this is bigger than a, a one school now decision. Certainly that's a decision that's before us and it will, could either be made for next fall or could be made for the following fall. But I believe we're making a thirty year facilities decision that is a pretty important issue when it comes to equity and opportunity for all kids, so.
So you're looking for a scenario where sixth graders were in the elementary schools, keep Fulton open, and then future elementary school on the south end, which would close probably some of the downtown elementary schools.
Or others, I mean.
And then also.
Two section schools.
Two section schools. And then also the idea of two middle schools.
Right.
With seventh and eighth graders.
Right.
That's a lot.
That'd be an imbalance.
Of data.
That'd be an imbalance in middle schools.
You wouldn't have your feeder schools.
It wouldn't be the same feeder. I don't think, I don't think they would accomplish the feeder process that originally was proposed.
It seems to me like we need to do two things at the same time. Like we do need to make some immediate decisions about Fulton and probably this middle school thing. And we do need to attend to this long range plan at the same time. Because we should talk about Southwest arterial, but I don't know if we should talk about it when enrollment is declining in all of our schools. Like that doesn't seem like the best timing right now.
It does.
But it, it is a fair point that we're losing students at that end and there's possibly growth happening. We, maybe, we don't know, we live in Iowa and it could not grow at all.
Declining population.
Well, it's about population shift as well.
It could, right.
When you open a Southwest arterial, you're going to see population shift. And then if that population shifts west, southwest, and it doesn't come to us, we actually have greater loss.
Right.
That's my concern.
Right, but we can't, I guess my, and I agree with you and my nerdy demography side loves that, but we can't predict it right now and we can't predict it a week from now, so.
Could it be a situation where we talk about purchasing land there versus an actual building at this point?
So we've had conversation with this, with the city who owns some land out there. Of course, we own Valentine Park as well and so some trades there. And so the land acquisition is not a difficult process. It's the resources to do something on that land that may or may not be difficult, but based on other decisions.
Right.
We can't decide to, we can't decide on Fulton without deciding on the middle schools because once Fulton is not there, then you, I believe, and I'd have to do the figuring, but I believe you'd lose your opportunity to move your sixth graders back to the elementary. Because you're going to use classrooms for sixth grade, there could have been one or the other. Either you're going to move it, you're going to put more elementary K five students there or you're going to put sixth graders there, but you can't put both.
That's right.
I think for me, I would need a bigger study of the sixth grade issue to be able to be comfortable with that decision just because of all of the different ways that it impacts it beyond just capacity, that, that it could, you know, there's, might be good pedagogical reasons, I'm sure there were when you made this shift, to have it set up the way that it is now. And so I'd want to make sure that there's good pedagogical reasons to shift it back, as well as those cultural things that I brought up before. So that seems like a much bigger endeavor to me than we can possibly ask you to come up with. But you're amazing too at getting us stuff we need, but that seems, the information I would need to be comfortable with that change, I don't know if it could be assembled in a week. Seems like a longer study to me.
Does that then call for us to wait? I'm, I'm not coming to the table saying, let's wait on the Fulton decision in and of itself. But does the bigger picture call for us to wait, make the decision now even and wait to implement it for a year? If we don't, we will not have the funds, if I understood Tim correctly, we will not have the funds to build a twelve million dollar elementary school. A four section might even be more than twelve million now.
Carver was probably about that and is fourteen years old, is it twelve years old?
Maybe a fifteen million dollar school. It's not going to happen until twenty fifty if we don't plan for it in the midst of the greater picture. That's my sense of urgency about it. For me, that's worth waiting a year to close a school or two. But others may not agree with that. So I'm not meaning to belabor that. It's just a thought I had today as I was preparing things and I thought, especially when I heard Tim say sixty million and nothing happens till twenty fifty. And even at that, the twenty fifty was a maybe. So it could be longer than that. That's, that's a, that's a big pause button in other ways.
There was something that, that I thought of and I was going to ask Tim about it, I forgot to ask him. With our elementaries, we're not spending any money to save money, okay?
If, under this scenario.
Other than scenario, in our middle schools, we'd have to spend money to save money.
You'd spend money on your sales taxes to save money in your general fund.
Right, but in the same token, we are, we would be saving four million dollars every year.
Yep.
Right? On the expenses.
For the middle school.
For the middle school.
In your operating fund.
Correct, in the general fund.
In the general fund, yes.
So that's good. I mean, I, I don't know if that, if he, was that part of his?
He was only talking about sales taxes. He wasn't talking about the general fund. To, to, to me, if there's a delay, and I'll look at Kevin to jump in. If there's a delay of a year, then what you have done is either you, you, you've spent a million dollars, which you have every right to do and we've, again, it's a hundred fifty million budget, but you might be in a situation where you'd have to do a bigger change next year. To, so, so that would, might not just be, if you're going to do a bigger study, then the following year, you'd be in the same place if you save two million dollars instead of a million dollars a year. You'd have to, does that make sense?
Yeah, two million, yeah.
You'd have to make a bigger decision a year from now to be in the same place.
I'll go back to what I said at the, or the support services facility meeting last month. We are about fourteen million for unspent balance at the end of twenty one. We are supplanting in the neighborhood of four million dollars with the Esser fund. My guess is we won't be able to supplant that much in the upcoming school year because we have used more Esser funds than that, than what we've set aside for supplanting. That means that unspent balance will decrease at more than four million per year for the next three, four years. And I'm going to say it'll probably be, yeah, starting after the next school year.
Starting in July of.
My guess is that will be higher because as an example, we are given two and a half percent. That is about five hundred thousand dollars in new money. Because of what, how the legislature goes with negotiations, we have had to try, we will be trying to settle for around three percent because based on how the laws go. That is about a two and a half million dollar deficit in just by itself. And that will be, continue on and get bigger as we have more settlements in the future. So that's why I am concerned with the timing of this. You may be pushing yourself into considerable changes three or four years down the road, going back to what happened in, and I want to avoid what happened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
That was my point is that if you, the, the, the cost isn't just the million dollars from this year to next year. It is that you need, you need to make a bigger decision a year from now than you do today to be in the same position. Because in July, July first of next year, not this July first, but of the next year, those dollars really start. So you have to be in a position, in my opinion, to make significant changes. I mean, it's, that's what Kevin said earlier, it kind of compounds itself. So if the decision is to hold a year because it's too rushed, I, I get that. I'm dumping a lot on you on a, on a Tuesday night, on March twenty ninth, wherever the date is. But the, the reality is to put off a decision means to increase the size of the decision next year.
And Amy, the ability to maintain staff that way, that's, that's pretty rare, I'm assuming, with the Fulton being able to retain all of the staff from them.
Yeah, you never know year to year.
You never know, but as that decision gets bigger, that's more people maybe that we would have displaced, to be placed. You know, I, I think, you know, for me sitting here and I think of twenty fifty, that's a long time away. You know, like, whoa, we're making decisions that, you know, are going to affect people that aren't even here right now. But I do think we need to be thinking about our staff, you know, because as we move forward, if we don't keep up with the times with giving staff raises and being able to continue with insurance benefits and some of those things, we are going to lose great people. You know, right now, we are not even at forty thousand dollars for a starting teacher. And that's pretty low on the U E N. You know, Kevin talked about negotiations, I looked. You know, Kevin talked about negotiations, I looked at Tammy, because the cat's out of the bag, Tammy, so. But in all reality, as we go through negotiations, you know, they're going to be looking to say, hey, we want more, otherwise, we're going to go find it somewhere else. So we talk about kids possibly leaving our district and enrollment going down. I also worry about staff leaving our district, because they will have potential opportunities elsewhere. You know, especially in hard-to-fill areas with special education certifications, science, math, industrial tech, everybody's shaking their head. I mean, the list goes on, unfortunately. And so it's, like, I can sit here, and I hate to look out and see the Fulton staff with tears in their eyes, because I know that they're great at their jobs, they're passionate about the families and kids they work with, but I can sit here and say, we have a job for all of you, and it's going to be, you know, hopefully, next year, I can go see them, and they say, this was good for me, this move was good for me, and I'm still working with kids. Because our whole goal is, we have to remember what's best for kids. So I just worry about the staffing piece as we talk about, you know, I understand the longevity of the facility piece, but we also have to think about doing best with our kid with staffs as well, so.
And spending, spending money, thank you, Amy, that was a great breakdown. Spending money, though, potentially buying land for a future elementary school, I don't see that as good timing right now. You know, when we need.
Is the growth expected out there?
Yeah, we don't know the growth expectancy, and can we wait that long?
The cost of the land is not an issue, because with the trade and with.
Yeah.
We can get the land, it's just, it's the, it's the facility that would go on the land.
And that's going to take a while, you know, the houses being built.
We have a fire right now that we need to put out, not worry about the house we're going to build in 15 years.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, Tammy, that's what I'm getting at.
Part of the fire, though, is because we're losing students to an adjacent district.
Well, I understand, but we can still acquire land, that, the land cost is.
It's not about the land, the land can be acquired, it's about building a $15 million building. And if we don't have funds till 2050 to do that, then what? We continue to allow the loss of, we continue to see student loss and therefore revenue loss. That's my whole issue here, it's not about, I think sixth grade should be in the elementary. I had sixth graders in my elementary schools, it's fine. Was I just as pleased to see them go to middle school? Yes. So donate my house elementary.
We don't know the growth of the neighborhoods on the southwest.
We don't, but are we willing to say we're going to tie our hands till 2050 that we can't accommodate a west, southwestern growth when we're expecting that will happen? We're literally making decisions now or next Tuesday that are going to not allow us to accommodate a southwestern movement. Think, it isn't all that long ago that Asbury didn't look like Asbury. 30 years ago, Asbury doesn't, didn't look like what Asbury looks like now. Were we not able to build a Carver because we had spent all of the, all of our funds? What?
I do, not to cut you off, my apologies.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, if you guys know the boss of my house, she would not tolerate that, so I'll let you finish.
I'm not the boss here.
Okay, no, me, my boss of the house, she doesn't tolerate that. I think we have to go back to the data that we have currently right now, the information we have right now to make the decision, not only short-term, but also trying to do the long-term. And so I think there is a sense of urgency for all of us to do something, right? And we just have to continue to look at the data in front of us. And so what I'm asking, I believe what the superintendent is asking us is, okay, if we're going to do something by Tuesday, let's just say that's the target date, what data or what information do we all need in order to make a decision moving forward? Because what we have now, based on efficiency, we have opportunities to save funding, and we owe that to the taxpayers. I get it's not all about money, because there is the student experience that's very critical, there's the staff experience which is very critical, and all of that's important in our decision-making. And that's the only data we have in front of us. So I believe if we want to unpack some more things and see where we can save money, resources, and people, what's the information we want so we can give to his team to bring that to us, so we can talk about it Tuesday? Because I do think we're doing spaghetti on the wall, too, with some other things. So is there any other thing that you really feel like, hey, at least let's unpack that a little more?
To me, the main thing is room, because there's going to be room.
For what, room? Sixth graders, maybe?
Yes, I mean.
There is six, there is.
Maybe not all the schools.
I don't.
I'm not sure, we'd have to look at that, but there's not, there's clearly not room for that and realigning Fulton.
Right.
There's just no way there is room for that.
Right. The only, the immediate gain of Fulton is offset, I mean, the issue is Fulton, grab a million dollars now, tie up going forward with the middle school with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade there, takes 50 million, 55, 60 million, whatever it is, not able to do other things, that's really what it comes down to. So in terms of what data do we need, I think it's, what does it look like if seven, 756 graders, or whatever the number of fifth graders there are now, whatever that number would be, were distributed, were kept in their home schools this year for next year as an option, or for the following year? What does that look like? Is there space? Certainly, when there's space available, space gets used.
Sure.
But is, is it capturable? We really need only look back to the chart that says 2016, 17, how many students were in our elementary schools in each of our elementaries, and compare the distribution of our, of our upcoming sixth graders over that, that number, it's really number over number, it's not.
We also have to look at, losing the sixth graders out of the middle schools will have empty space.
I don't want to facilitate the conversation, because that's not my.
That's the point, that we wouldn't need to spend $60 million to build such a large middle school facility. Enough said, it is simply whether the board wants to explore that, or if the board is saying, no, we don't have any interest in that, we need to move on.
Yeah, let's just, because again, we're going to go everywhere right here, let's just, the data point, I don't think it's wrong to look at the information. Let's remember also, long-term, the superintendent did mention that he'll be gone, so we won't throw tomatoes at him. But there's going to be other buildings where we have to look at as well, and elementary, to begin to slice up and dice, right? So let's not lose sight on that, so I just think right now, what's the data point we want to look at? And we, I've heard that, Stan, your thoughts on that?
I guess my point is, and I think Kevin and Amy said it really well, is, I mean, there is a fire coming that is, that is our unspent balance, at the heart of it. But it is also the ability to acquire staff. So we have to find savings that not only flatten the downward trajectory of our unspent balance, but creates enough resource to acquire talent. And that's just where we're at, and so we have to do, and we have to do that soon. So we can do that for next fall at a million dollars-ish, and then down the road with the, with the middle school in four years. But if we go a different route, we can still get to where we're going, but we have to make bigger decisions at that point. I did hear Tim say, I think, and I would want to double-check that, that we could move the middle school change up maybe by a year, and do it in three years or something. So that does provide some potential relief, if people are willing to really move, make a decision and move forward, and charge a committee to get that done, because we need to start to realize that savings in our general fund. The sales tax, I get it, I'm with you, Nancy, I cringe to think we're going to commit people who will sit in these chairs that we've never met of not having those resources, but I have to balance that with knowing that people sitting in those chairs need us to make a decision, because they're here today, and they need jobs and to be paid what they're worth. And so it, I'm torn both ways, I get it. But, so if we do push this down, you know, so we'll put the data together that we can in a week. And if we can't get to a decision that moves us to changes for August, just know, that means the changes that happen the following years have to be more dramatic. You can get to the same place, but instead of saving a million dollars a year, you've got to save $2 million the first year. So you've got to rip the, you know, the, I just want everybody to be prepared for that, that it's not, you know, we're, I'm just rambling.
For me, I don't know that there is more data that I would need to be comfortable with what we've seen so far. And so I don't, I don't need more information, but if others need more to get closer to these plans, I don't need any more data.
I don't need any more data. I mean, we need consensus to.
Yeah, let's move forward.
To put these people to work at more options, we probably should, you know. If this is a really valid option for us before we put them on another fact-finding.
Hearing what Amy and Kevin and Stan are presenting to us right now, I don't need any more information to have to.
This is the time to do something.
I don't, yeah, I don't need to change the trajectory we're on.
And that, back to what you brought up, I threw that, just thinking out of the box, at our last meeting.
That's fair.
You bring up very.
And I don't think that, I think it's, that would throw a monkey wrench into this game plan that seems, there seems to be a little bit of sense of urgency. And I think that the savings that you're thinking about, as far as down the road, maybe we don't have to be in the situation where, if we don't build something new in middle school, we don't have to spend that $60 million or whatever.
I really feel like we could be attentive to that concern in the planning process, whatever that might look like.
Sure.
But we have to deal with the issue that we're facing right now.
Basically, deciding to close Fulton for next fall means you could not move the sixth graders.
Right.
Keep the sixth graders in the elementary school. So that ships sails if that is the case. Then you're into the $60 million middle school or whatever.
Possibly, or renovation, or whatever.
We're into spending money, we don't know.
Spending.
Spending money.
The money that's available to be spent.
Right, whatever, however you put that.
That was the point of my alternative thinking, was to say, is there a way not to do that? And that's what brought me today back to.
It's helpful to go through it.
I understand the thinking.
It's okay.
I understand the thinking, I just.
It's a work session, we're going to brainstorm.
It's a work session.
So at our board meeting, at our board meeting, first of all, it's going to be after the committee meeting. Are we going to vote on this, or what's the fast fire?
So eventually, so eventually, there will be, need to be a resolution, and we'll go through those processes. But what I, what I need, if we're, if we're, there are still decision points ahead. One path for that decision point is to decide we want you to continue to pursue what it would look like if we closed Fulton. If that's what we were asking us to do tonight, then in the next week, we will look at what those boundary changes are. So tonight, we'll communicate with families and staff. We'll look at what those boundaries are, we'll present those boundaries on April 4th, next Monday. After that time, we'll, so then we'll give an opportunity for feedback before that meeting, but then after that meeting, we'll do family information sessions. And then it comes back to the board on that Monday, so that's the time we actually are making, that's the point of no return. Which is, we're doing this at the board meeting in two weeks.
So to make you.
So then we would do staff notifications, realignments. If you're asking for more data for next week, then we can do this, and then we probably need another board meeting the following week. If we're going, if we land on deciding to do Fulton, because the board has to officially act. We're not acting, doing, we're asking for permission to begin to communicate that we're looking at this and to put together what that, what those data attendance centers would look like. But the official decision is not made for two weeks. And so we need that time in there to put things together, to communicate with families, to communicate with staff. And so if we don't make a decision tonight, and we push it back until next week, I still need those two weeks. So there'd need to be another board meeting the week after the board meeting to say, okay, we're going to pass this resolution. Maybe it could be a short meeting or whatever it would be, but I need, we need two weeks to do the things on that timeline. And so if we decide we want more information before we make that decision, that's okay. But then we still need that two weeks, and we get to a point where we run out of time with staffing. I mean, we have a principal to hire in one of our buildings likely, we have other staffing positions, we have a lot to get done. And so, and again, I'll go back and spin it in circles now, but if we say we're going to not do this for a year, then okay, but then next year, we've got to find $2 million instead of a million. Because we're okay until July 1st of next year, but then it starts to plummet, and so you've got to find $2 million in savings and not a million to be in the same place.
So are we at a consensus as a board that the district should move forward with this plan at this point?
Yep.
With Fulton, even though we know and recognize it's difficult, but necessary?
It's still not a final decision.
Still not final, but just explored.
But we need to communicate, because we owe it to people that have opportunities for input.
Hey, Stan, when we do combine, let's say this goes through in Fulton, how many, how will that help our air conditioning needs? Will some of those adjacent buildings there, how many of them are air-conditioned?
We would potentially put all students, I mean, I'll go back to that. Audubon is, Prescott is, oops, I'm going the wrong way, sorry.
Marshall's the only one without air conditioning.
Irving isn't.
Irving is not, Irving is a partial, but it's. So it would put more kids in air-conditioning, but not all of those kids at Fulton.
Gets us closer.
Gets us, and one less building to have that, you know.
But also an air-conditioned, that Bryant, Hoover.
Right.
Absolutely, most of, yeah.
So, just so we're not, like, in the weeds.
And Jefferson, Washington.
Because we can talk about this issue more next week, right? Maybe, when we have boundary lines a little bit more clear?
Right, so.
I just want to make sure we're moving you towards being able to go forward with that.
Yeah, so if there's consensus to do this, to move to the next stage, the pieces in the next stage are to communicate with families and staff, to look at the boundaries and what that would look like, what students would go where, share that with you on April 4th. Then upon April 4th, you said, yep, we still want to keep moving forward, then we'll do informational sessions with families. Again, here, there's opportunity for feedback to families there and here, as well as staff. And then it comes to the board in two weeks for a final decision. So tonight, it really is, maybe I wasn't very clear about that, it really is asking permission to say, there's enough interest to move forward with looking at what those boundaries. We're not going to ask you to make a final decision, because it is a work session for two weeks. But in order to do that work, you know, we want to know you're at least interested enough for us to continue on with the process.
So we are there, is that, am I reading everyone correctly?
Yeah.
Board, yes, okay, so next middle school, do we need to make some?
So.
Permission for direction on that one as well?
No, really, at the middle school, we'll need to, again, have that conversation again. We wanted to again, put the data out there, but what we're looking for is at a future board meeting, could be in two weeks, or it could be the month after that, if we're putting too much in one meeting, to say, by 2026, we need, you know, we're creating this committee, we're looking at this, it could be sooner than that potentially, from what Tim said, which is interesting to me, because I just didn't think we could move that fast, but potentially, we could. And then that committee starts to begin that process, but it would be a commitment from the board. You're going to have to meet again to approve the funding, and there are lots of intermediate steps there, but this is sort of the board's commitment to the community that by 2026, we're going to have a two-middle-school solution, regardless, no matter what that looks like. You know, a new building, a renovated building, different grade levels, that sort of thing. The only thing is, Nancy pointed out, once we close Fulton, the opportunity to put sixth graders, that, that.
Changes.
Probably changes, unless you had a sixth-grade-only building.
And then do we need some?
Do you want to know that?
Sorry, Adam, I need to bring it up.
Some consensus from us tonight about the soccer complex, or is?
No, that was more informational, and I just really highly encourage you to say, let's, if we bring a recommendation to support services and then to a full board meeting for you to say, we're selling the soccer complex, so that's where you want to go, and we're going to establish the price based on sort of the, well, based on whatever board wants to base that on, so that the people who were interested would have a year to put together, because we can't sell it for a year.
Okay. Stan, a question about projected savings with the various plans. On slide 12, where we show 3.274915 million being spent by Fulton, for the operation of Fulton. And of that, you said we would look at. And of that, you said, we would look at, it's the one before staffing consideration.
Is it this one?
Yeah, there we go, yeah. So across from the red, or, or down at the bottom, anyway, 3.314915 million. So, and you said of that, we would look at having that result in a savings of a million a year.
Yeah, that's, that's a projection we've been working on.
Now, can you go to the middle school one, please? Which is slide 19, in case there. There we go. 3.8 million. So you did not give us a different number for what we would, well, the other was a, quite a similar number, actually, from which we would extract a million a year. From the 3.8 million, I haven't heard you put forward a different number that would be saved.
Correct. Well, one of the biggest factors is the title money. So part of that 3 million at the elementary is title money. So that doesn't impact our general fund.
Right.
This, middle schools don't have title funding. So that's why it rolls into, so this number may very much change in the coming, you know, through that process with the?
But not as much as?
No, no, not as much. And some would argue it could even be higher, but I just, we, this is a conservative number that we've chosen.
Is there anything else that folks need to discuss tonight, or any other information the district needs from us?
Kevin or Amy, was there anything that you wondered about, would seek clarification about, that we will provide next week?
Okay, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, I think, again, from the board, appreciate the information, appreciate the connection this morning with the teachers, appreciate the follow-up tomorrow, appreciate the language you used that hopefully empowered the teachers to says, hey, we still want to keep them and help them to grow within our organization. All of that is important. And the amount of community engagement that's going to happen throughout this process to inform many stakeholders, all of that is important in this decision. So we appreciate you, we appreciate the staff in Fulton for being here. It's tough, but we're in this together, right?
That's right. I lived through a time years ago as the HR director where we chose to lay off staff as opposed to close buildings. We did, we laid off 110 staff members as opposed to close buildings. And I would recommend not going down that path again and looking at buildings and other efficiencies and saving staff.
Agreed. All right, any other items? Well, we are adjourned.